Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Baye Kazi, which means Judge of Alodio and Moore's Parryam. I am the judge for Consul of Court. And today, I would like to go over a little bit more information as it relates to Part Three of the question is, how did the Moors lose their land? So today is Part Three and a continuation of that. So remember, as we went over in Parts One, we talked about its cheat and hypothesize. That's how the Moors lost their land. Parts Two, we start getting the definition of color, et cetera, because the hybrid Europeans who go under the nominee here name of American or white people, which they're really colonists, they're settlers. These people are really cheaply British. That's their real nationality, British. So therefore, what you must understand is that, who are we talking about? We're talking about a feud, feud, a feud of the colonists versus the Moors. So in the definition of feudal, it's a compound word for few and owls. The word owl means the owls, who are the owls, the Moors. Then we looked up the definition. We looked up the definition of alodio. Alodio means not having a superior over you. But alodio starts with an A-L, owl. So the opposite, the antonym of feudal is alodio. The antonym of alodio is feudal. So therefore, the colonists are feuding with the owls. But who are the owls? The Moors, alright? So we'll keep talking about how did the Moors lose their land? They lost their land through a cheat and hypothesize. Go back to Video One and you'll see that, alright? So today, we'll continue on to understand how the Moors lose their land, and more importantly, what's the remedy on how they get the land back? We'll talk about that as well. There's no use in talking about problems unless you have solutions. Problem, solution. And what's the main solution? The mothers. The mothers must use a pen to get themselves back into common law. We'll talk about that today, alright? So first things first. Now that we understand hypothesize and its cheat, we must understand the other words that delude to slavery. How did they get the Moors to take on brands that subjugated them? And how did the colonists give themselves de facto titles that gave them a false superior status that does not, that's not acceptable by authoritarian terms around the world as it relates to nationality? Because white is not a nationality. Yet, white is a superior position anytime you're talking about crayons. And what are the five families of the crayons? You got white, red, yellow, brown, and black. So therefore, white, what's the opposite of white? Black, from the furthest extreme. You'll find that in the definition of black. It talks about the extreme grade scale, the grade scale. Come out there streams. Extreme is black, white, or when you reverse it, black on top, white on top. So therefore, this is a status game that's being played where they're claiming to be white, but ain't no such thing as white people on planet Earth. If you go to Europe right now, there's fifty countries in Europe. None of them are named white. You go to Africa right now, there's fifty-four countries in Africa. None of them are named black. So where did these white and black people come from? Because the people, listen. The people are named after the land, and the land is named after the people. So if there's no white land, then how could people be named white? It's a caste system. That must be known. But it's not real in law, but it's real in legality. So in legality, that's what you call de facto. De facto government and rules called statutes and codes. In common law, it's a violation of what they do under a legal status, because in common law, that's for people, and people have nationalities. So therefore, under common law, which is the mothers, the mothers create nationality. Under legal, which the colonists created, everybody's a crayon, an adjective, civil leader, more twos. So today, we'll keep talking about what else did the colonists do to steal the land from the Moors? First thing you must understand is that they always use what's called a pen. They used a pen to write the Moors out of history. Then they used the pen to write themselves into a de facto status pretending to be Moors. The power of the pen is mightier than the sword. So the Moors must use a pen to write themselves back into their rightful position as being the primogeniture, Moors. And we'll talk about that today. So first thing we must do is understanding law and history. So therefore, under what's called the Naturalization Act of 1870, is when the colonists by the stroke of a pen through their Congress, their de facto government, which is their House of Representatives, congressmen, their senators, judicial branch, and the executive branch being the president. The two branches at the bottom, the legislators, legislators in the House of Representatives, House of Representatives legislators, senators, judicial. They put together a bill called the Naturalization Act, sent that to the President of the United States, who signed it into law. And what happened is, they escaped it and stole the birthright from the Moors. How did they do it? With a pen. What specifically did they write? Let's take a look at it. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna have the mothers read the Naturalization Act of 1870. Why is that important? Because mothers are always responsible for the law, the legislation of law. So therefore, we have the mothers read it because we have to drain the mothers back into the fold of government. So mother, would you like to read the Naturalization Act of 1870? What page is that?
It is page 256.
Okay, so please speak up for the people at home.
256, page 256.
So is it 254 through 256?
Correct.
Alright, so pages 254 through 256.
Section seven.
Section seven, alright. And it reads as follows.
And be it further enacted that the naturalization laws are hereby extended to aliens of African nativity and to persons of African descent.
Alright, thank you, mother. So what happened there? The colonists, through a pen on what they call legislation, through their hand, said that the descendants of Africans shall be citizens of the United States. That's what you call fraud. Why is it fraud? Because under the definition of ex parte, which means a one-sided, unlawful decision, the United States of America, not to be confused, the United States voting corporations, the United States of America decided to bring the Moors in as citizens. They couldn't do that. They did not get consent from the Moors, more specifically, the Moors women. But yet, they corrupted the bloodline of the Moors by saying they shall now be citizens in the United States through the stroke of a pen, without getting consent from the other party of the contract. What contract are we talking about? The Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1786, signed in the courts of Morocco, and then fully ratified by the United States for Americans, 1787. Which means, under Article Twenty, if there's any dispute between a citizen of the United States or a Moor, then the consul shall make the final decision. So if the United States had a dispute with Moors, they couldn't arbitrarily make a unlawful decision under ex parte to make Moors citizens in the United States. They couldn't do it, because we're two separate nations. They put Moors under the guise of being citizens, citizens of the United States. They couldn't do that, that's called fraud. So therefore, you go back to the Vienna Convention of 1969, reference point. You look up Article Forty-Eight that says, "There was an error." Well, what was the error? Now you gotta look up Article Forty-Nine. It says, "There was fraud." Well, who committed the fraud? You look at Article Fifty, it says, "Corruption by a state representative." So the representatives, the legislators of the United States, your governors, et cetera, through a stroke of a pen, said that Moors shall be citizens in the United States. That's fraud, that's corruption. Then you look at Article Fifty-One of the Vienna Convention, 1969, it says, "Corhersion by a state." What state? The United States of America. It's all fraud. Which makes it void ab initio. Void ab initio means void from the beginning. So anything they did with that pen that they didn't get consent from Moors, immediately in law, it is null and void. Void ab initio, Latin word for meaning void from the beginning. Alright, so as we learn with the reference point of the Naturalization Act of 1870 specifically, page 254 to 256, section seven. Okay, mother, go ahead and read the Naturalization Act of 1870, pages 254 to 256, section seven, please.
And be it further enacted that the naturalization laws are hereby extended to aliens of African nativity and to persons of African descent.
Alright, so they're saying that the descendants of Africans are aliens. Well, wait a minute. Well, how could that be? So what are they using that? What word are they using to identify a person as being an alien? The word is called denizen. Denizen. D-E-N-I-V-E-N. Which means you're an alien or a subject. So today, we're talking about the definition of denizen so that you can see how the Moors lost their land through a stroke of a pen by the act of Congress, the de facto legislators, who fraudulently put the Moors as citizens underneath the United States of America. So for the purpose of the viewers at home, we're gonna go to denizen. That's on page 522 of the Black's Law Dictionary, Fourth Edition. And we're gonna have the mothers read, starting with the word denization, denization, Fourth Edition. When the mothers read, now we're starting to help with following humanity, because when the mothers study and comprehend, then the mothers are the first teacher of the child. We can start to bring the children back in the proper fold of government. So let's go ahead and read denization, one of the mothers.
The act of making one a denizen, the conferring of the privileges of citizenship upon an alien born.
An act, so first thing you must understand, it's an act. What's an act? It's an action. An act by who? Legislators with the pen. Why is this important to understand? Because these people who call themselves the Americans, white people, colonists, settlers, who are really cheaply British, don't have sovereignty in this land because they're not the primogeniture, Aboriginals, autognist, natives of this land. So therefore, they gotta use a pen illegally to give themselves rights over Moors. So what's happening? There's an act of making one a denizen. So they made someone a denizen. And we're gonna find out what's the true definition of a denizen. The conferring of the privileges of citizenship upon an alien born. So they gave you privileges in exchange for rights. So what happened? They took your right of nationality. They took your right of your birthright and in exchange, gave you privileges. Privileges is way different than rights. Just like your child, you can buy him a cellphone and let him use it. They had a privilege of using it, but they don't have a right, because they didn't buy it and they don't pay for the cellphone bill, which means you can take it from that child anytime you want, because he's got the privilege of using it. However, you have the right, because you own it. So they gave us privileges under the status of alien and took away our rights. But that was under the context of fraud, ex parte, a unlawful decision, of corruption. Let's continue. So the next word is denazize. We're on page 522. Denazize, if we have the mothers read it.
Denies.
Denies, excuse me.
To make a man a denizen or citizen.
Okay, so denies, now they're really simplifying it now, right? They made a man a denizen or citizen. How did they make something? With a pen. They created something. Because you were already born a Moor. So they have to, now, as a man, they have to tell you now, you're a black man. You're no longer a Moor. They made you a denizen. You're a black man. You're an African man. You are what they call African American. They give you all these titles. Negro, mulatto, Indian, everything but Moor. Everything but Moroccan. Because those words are national names. The other ones are denizen brands. Let's continue. With the definition of denizen.
In English law, a person who, being an alien born, has obtained ex donacion regis, letters patent to make him an English subject.
Let's stop right there. Before we go any further, let's get a basic understanding. That's what Moors must do, comprehend. Gotta go back and comprehend what they just read. Under denizen, in English law, a person who, being an alien born, how could you be an alien born? First things first, we're talking English law, Great Britain. So a lot of people don't know that the United States of America corporation is governed by the laws of Great Britain. All attorneys must pass what's called a bar association. What does a bar stand for? It's an acronym for British Accredited Registry. That Great Britain has what they call a Commonwealth jurisdiction over Morocco on behalf of their United States of America citizens. Because all United States citizens are really under British, British protections. So therefore, that's why I tell you merely English law. Well, I thought it was United States of America. Why are you talking about English law? Because the British Parliament controls the United States of America. Why? Because the British are here as the legislators in the United States of America Congress. Go with your question, mother.
Can you repeat the acronym for a bar?
So bar stands for British Accredited Registry. That's why all your attorneys, your lawyers, which are your barristers, and your turners. Why do they call them turners? Because they turn you over to the jurisdiction of the Crown. They're all officers of the de facto court. They're all colluding together to steal the birthright of the Moors on behalf of the Crown, i.e. England. Let's continue. Continue with the reading. So that's on me, let me continue the breakdown. So we got in English law, a person who's being an alien born. So first things first, how can you be an alien born? Everybody's born with a nationality. So what are they saying that you're an alien born? You must understand, there's four classifications. Watch this. There's four classifications. The first classification is national. That's a nationality. The second classification is citizen. The third classification is subject. And then the fourth classification is alien. So these people call themselves negro, black, and colored, African-American, and sometimes Baptist. They're listed as aliens, which is the lowest class of status. What's higher than an alien? Subject. What is a subject? Someone's a servant. What is a citizen? Well, in Rome, they tell you the citizens have the power, those of your rich elite, they have citizen. What's a citizen? Someone who has a nationality and can enforce the policies of rights. Where it is, people that are subjects and citizens can only enforce civil rights, which are, which are less than rights. Civil rights, meaning you can only enforce a portion, a percentage of rights. Where it is, citizens and nationals can enforce all political rights under a constitution and treaties. So that's classification, you must understand. Two different classifications. So watch this. How can the United States claim to be a nation when not claiming a nationality? If you ask anyone that claims to be a United States citizen, then what's the nationality of the people? Watch this. Mexicans come from Mexico. Brazilians come from Brazil. Italians come from Italy. The British come from Great Britain. Now, let's go back to the United States. What's your nationality for the United States? The people are named after the land, the land named after the people. So what's your nationality?
United States.
United States of America, your nationality? Don't make no damn sense. So you ask somebody to call themselves the United States citizen, hey, what's your nationality? They're supposed to respond with, "United States of America." That's the nationality. Look on any passport, and it tells you right there. Nationality, United States of America. Don't make no sense. You don't even see the game being played. So you say that everybody in the United States of America nationality is United States of America? That's BS. Because the United States of America is a corporation. It's not a nationality, because a nationality must have consanguinity blood set to it. So therefore, the reality is, everybody in the United States of America that calls themselves a citizen is really a subject. Subject of who? Great Britain. Because Great Britain can claim the consanguinity as being British. And everybody else is called in a subject status. It's an alien status. Alien means you don't even come from a land. Because a subject, at the very least, can claim, well, I'm a national, it's just that I'm a slave. But I still have a nationality. An alien doesn't have a nationality. That's why they call it alien, saying, you just dropped out of the sky, just fell down. Because alien means you don't come from any landmass, no country. You can't even name the pedigree. So you got people calling around, calling themselves negro, black, and colored. That's not a nationality, which means you're an alien, because you're not telling nobody what motherland you came from. That's why they're classifying people who call themselves negro, black, and colored, Indian, Baptist, et cetera, aliens. Because you ain't telling nobody where you came from. At the very least, a subject can claim a nationality, but they're a slave. They're the ones at the bottom of the totem pole. Citizens can claim nationality. Nationals is the nationality. So why are they talking about where aliens? Remember, Naturalization Act, 1870, said the descendants of Africans shall be aliens. What'd they do? They attacked the mothers. They removed the mother out of the scene and said the child now don't have a mother, which means you don't come from no land, because all mothers come from a land. Once you remove the mother out of the equation, you can claim that child being an alien says they don't have a mother. That's why they call mother earth, mother land. Black people don't have a land. Why? Because there ain't no such thing as black people. There's thirty-five countries in the continent of America. None of them are named brown or black. There's forty-five countries in Asia. None of them are called yellow. So if you have somebody from China come and call themselves yellow, immediately, they're an alien, because there ain't no such thing as yellow people and no yellow country or state. So how can people be black if there's no black country? You're an alien. You don't have a mother. To claim you as one of theirs. So what happens? You get adopted by the state of wherever you think you came from. And that state of, in all caps, is claiming you as an adoption agency, as an alien. They took you in, said, oh, where's your mother? You don't know where your mother is? Well, what's your nationality? Oh, you said that you're black? Oh, yeah. We're gonna go ahead and adopt you and put you under our rules and regulations as an alien. Matter of fact, we're gonna give you our last name. Smith, Jones, and Johnson, and remove your B-A-L-L-I-E, et cetera. Under alien status, you get adopted by the State of Colorado Corporation, as an example. Let's continue with the reading.
Oh, a high and incommunicable branch of the royal prerogative. A denizen is in a kind of middle state between an alien and a natural-born subject and partakes of the status of both of these.
So wait a minute. So a denizen is stuck between an alien and a subject. An alien and a subject. So a person who calls themselves negro, black, and colored is an alien, but they can also be considered a subject. Why? Because they're the slaves subjected to... Subjected to what? They have to pledge allegiance to their adopted mother and father and start doing work in the fields on behalf of their adopted mother and father. Because they're the stepchild. So they get some privileges. They get some privileges, but no rights. Let's continue with the reading.
The term denizen is used to signify a person who, being an alien by birth, has obtained letters patent, letters patent, making him an English subject.
Stop. So what are they talking about right there? What's the letter? What's the patent letter? You know what they're saying? That's the birth certificate. And the marriage certificate. Soon as the mother, African mother, gives birth to the child, the state of and its hospital, and the hospital is part of the conspiracy, they take the child into the birth war. Because the child is born immediately as an alien, because they don't have nationality. Then the state says immediately it's a stateless person, meaning they don't have no state to claim. And they can't claim it's coming from the state of Mexico. All of a sudden, you become an alien. And make you a ward of the state. They're taking the birth war, and then the warden of a prison, warden of a prison overseas. These people who are incarcerated. So therefore, aliens, subjects are incarcerated being adopted children of the United States of America. Not to be confused, the United States or the several states. They bring you in as an adopted child that has no nationality. So therefore, when they're talking about the patent letter, they're talking about the birth certificate, because the birth certificate is the mother registering her child over to the state of and saying, that's now your child. Because they put the child's name in all capital letters on the birth certificate. And the mother don't realize, she just signed a contract with the state of Colorado, saying, yes, my child, for the record, is an alien, and now you've adopted it, and I did an adoption agency. That's all it is. But they didn't tell you they were adopting your child. Taking it as property, an adoption agency. And you didn't say objection, because you didn't recognize that the names are all capital in the corporation. And they didn't tell you about the adhesion contract. What's an adhesion contract? See, when they gave you the birth certificate, that was one little piece of paper, and you signed off on it. But you didn't know that one piece of paper had a big, thick contract assessed to it. That's called an adhesion contract. So in law, you must let both parties know what are the terms and conditions of said contract, and failure to do so makes that contract void. It's ex parte. It's fraud. Because they were explaining to you as a mother that that birth certificate or marriage certificate is a bond to take your child away and all your privileges as a mother to make it an alien. You would've never agreed to that. So the letter of patent is the birth certificate, marriage certificate. It's the bond, bondage, your child is born into bondage. That's what they call sin, ignorance. Ignorance of what? Ignorance of the law. Because ignorance of the law is no excuse. Let's continue with the reading.
Okay. The king may denies, but not naturalize a man. The latter requiring the content of parliament as under the Naturalization Act, 1870, section thirty-three.
So you don't need to read the case law. But let's point out what they just said. See, they just pointed out the fraud, didn't they? The Naturalization Act of 1870, isn't that what we read earlier? Page 254 to 256, section seven? They're pointing out, how did they make you a denizen through the Naturalization Act of 1870? They're pointing out, how did they make you a denizen through the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy? "Descendants of Africans shall be citizens of the United States and be considered aliens." Aliens don't have a nationality. Okay, let's skip over to case law, go straight into the linear entry after that.
That wasn't case law.
Okay.
That was sections. The next sentence is, "A denizen holds a position midway between an alien and a natural-born or naturalized subject, being able to take lands by purchase or devise, which an alien could not until eighteen seventy do, but not able to take lands by descent, which a natural-born or naturalized subject may do."
Okay. So what's happening here? The colonists knew they couldn't own land as a colonist. So they had to say that the Moors were dead on paper through a pen called a sheet and hypophication, and said they were dead on paper. They're aliens now. They don't have a mother. They disappeared, they capsized, they perished. And now, the colonists come in, and they say, "Under the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, now they wield the power of the pen to buy property." Let's continue the reading, it'll make sense to you, just a second.
"The denizen becomes a British subject from the date of the letters, while a naturalized person is placed in a position equivalent to that of a natural-born subject."
Okay, let's stop right there. It says, "The denizen became a British subject." Remember I told you earlier, that all United States of America citizens are really British subjects? They tell you right then and there. Let's continue with that. And it says, "From the date of the letters." What letters?
Birth certificate.
Birth certificates. Naturalized person, because of eighteen seventy Naturalization Act, is a plan in, um, position equivalent to that of a natural-born subject. Now, let's look at natural-born. You see the word "natural-born"? The average person will read that and zip right past it. Did you see a little hyphen in the middle? That hyphen in the middle means a compound adjective, meaning, natural-born should be two separate words. That's for people with blood. And so they put the words together with a hyphen, immediately means that's a compound adjective, which means what? People are nouns. A compound adjective means, adjective is not a noun, it can't be a person, place, or thing. So you're naturally born as an alien, because an alien doesn't have consanguinity, doesn't have bloodline in it, because it doesn't have a mother. So in the definition of natural-born, under a legal pen, they say it on paper. You're dead, you're an adjective. You're not a noun anymore. You're an adjective. Adjective can't be a person, place, or thing.
With the dash in between.
With the dash, the hyphen, the dash in between means compound adjective. So it's a game they're playing, but most people don't catch that. People go around here saying, "Man, yeah, my baby was naturally born, I had natural birth, natural..." They don't know, in their language, they're saying "natural-born" with a hyphen. Because that's what the colonists put in their documentation and the policy, that everybody's natural-born with a hyphen. No one's born as natural-born, two words. Only under common law are you born with the two words. Let's continue the reading.
Okay. Um, "The denizen becomes a British subject, from..." Oh, we read that already. "The word is also used, in this sense, in South Carolina."
Continue.
Case study. "In American law, a dweller, a stranger admitted to certain rights in a foreign country, or as one who lives habitually in a country but is not a native-born citizen, one holding a middle state between an alien and a natural-born subject."
Continue.
"One who has some relation to the enemy nation which is not lost by the alien's presence within the United States."
Continue.
"Thus, one who lived and worked in Austria in nineteen thirty-eight, at time, at the time Germany obtained control of Austrian government, and continued to live there until leaving for the United States in nineteen thirty-nine, at which time he was issued a German passport, was a denizen of Germany within any enemy alien, within the enemy alien act."
Okay, stop. So that last paragraph we just read. Watch this. Let's read it again, for comprehension. "Thus, one who lived and worked in Austria in nineteen thirty-eight," I believe that's thirty-eight, "at time of Germany obtained control of Austrian government, and continued to live there until leaving for the United States in..." I think that's eighteen eighty-nine?
Nineteen eighty-nine.
Pretty small. "At which time he was issued a German passport, was a denizen of Germany within the enemy alien act." What does that mean? Watch this. Let me give you an example, what happened? Austria is a country. Germany is a country. Germany came in and annexed, took over land, invaded Austria, and overshadowed them with a shadow government, called a de facto government. So Germans told the Australian, Austrians, they should now call themselves Germans. Not Austrians, but Germans. So here, these people, Austrians, have Austrian nationality, but the German government is telling them, "You better call yourself German, because this is all Germany now." So what happened is this. When the Austrians want to now fly out of Germany, they have to get a German passport to come to the United States. But yet, they ain't German. So therefore, in the definition of denizen, they are subjects of Germany. But Germany, through use of force, hypophication and its sheet, through a marriage certificate, birth certificate, forced these Austrians to call themselves German. That's the same thing happened to the Moors. The United States comes in. You got Moors in Morocco, two separate nations. Go back and read, watch the letter to C.D. Muhammad. He talks about two separate nations. Now, suddenly, the United States, through use of force, forces the Moors to come in under the United States of America, and a denizen status, alien, through the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. Section seven, on page two fifty-four to two fifty-six. And classified them as denizens. So now, these people who call themselves Negro, Black, and Color, if they fly out of the United States of America, they gotta get what type of passport? United States of America passport, denizen, subjects.
They've been working overtime on these pens.
Mm-hmm. With the power of a pen. Let's continue. So that's an example. You see, they're giving you examples of what a denizen is? Someone who's been subjected. Let's continue with the reading.
Um, "A denizen, in the primary but obsolete sense of the word, is a natural-born subject of a country."
So therefore, a denizen is a natural-born subject of a country. You're a subject, subject to what? You're subject to all the rules, regulations, in order for you to have privileges, but you don't have rights. So now, let's go look up the definition of subject.
Because you don't have sanguinity.
Correct. You're not a family member by blood of the adopted family. You're the red-haired stepchild. That turns around, your adopted family turns around and molests you. They discriminate against you because you're different, but yet, they're obligated to take care of you, because they're your adopted parents. But they only keep you around for one reason, and one reason only, because they're living off your vast estate. What they didn't tell you is that you're rich. And they're living off your estate, because you're a trust fund baby, and you didn't even know it. So your adopted family is acting like powers of attorney, and living good off of your vast estate, and giving you crumbs in a mop and a bucket and a broom, telling you clean the house of the mansion that your ancient mother and fathers bestowed onto you, but the colonists moved in and made to the janitor, because you bumped your head under psychosis and cognitive dissonance. And since now, you act like a lunatic. They get to bring you in, treat you like an adopted child. What's the definition of a lunatic? Lunar, lunatic. Meaning going around in a circle, lunar, like a moon, lunar? It means you go from two different personalities. One personality, you act like you highly intelligent. Then also, you tell somebody you're black. They say, "Wait, hold up." That's the definition of lunatic. Someone that shows signs of intelligence, then they space out, and they do something stupid, say something stupid, act stupid, that enationalizes them. So you got the homeless out here in the street. You talk to a homeless person for about two or three minutes, they act like they got some sense. "Man, how'd you end up out here on the street?" And also, they space out, start talking and mumbling and doing their thing, say, "Oh, I see now, your ass crazy." But the reality is, they ain't crazy. They're a lunatic. They go from signs of intelligence, and then they show some levels of being a moron. And that's the definition of black people, Negroes, African Americans. And those people call themselves Baptists, is the truth. All right, here we go. So now, we're gonna look at the definition of alien, so we can have the mothers read alien. Let's start from the top.
Alien, now, a foreigner, one born abroad. A person who owes allegiance to a foreign government. In this country, is a person born out of the United States and unnaturalized under our constitution and laws.
Stop. So what we're already understanding is that an alien is a foreign, and one born abroad. So therefore, what they're saying is, an alien, which is Negro, Blacks, and Colors, were born abroad and not on their own land. You were born in somebody else's jurisdiction. So let's really talk about, let's get down to it, why I say they're talking about the mothers. I now want you to go down to the last paragraph on the definition of alien, and read that, the small print.
"As to the effects of marriage on the status of women, whether they were originally aliens or citizens of the United States."
And you got your case law.
And the case law.
So let's read that sentence one more time aloud, I'm gonna read it. "As to the effect of marriage on the status of women, whether they were originally aliens or citizens of the United States." Right then and there, they're telling you what they're doing to the women. Right then and there, they're telling you they're attacking the woman. They're saying the woman don't have a nationality. So therefore, my beautiful sisters out there call themselves Black, Negro, Color, Minority, African American, none of those themes are nationalities. You're immediately cast under a status of alien. So therefore, when you have a child, the child is born with the same status as the mother. So if the mother's an alien, the child immediately an alien, under the birth certificate. So why are they talking about the marriage certificate here? Oh, because the marriage certificate and the birth certificate are the same type of certificate. What does that mean? So when a sister that calls herself Black gets married with her husband, the marriage certificate means this, that the State of Colorado, so when you stand there and you say, "I do," the priest, the pastor, the rabbi, et cetera, they get that one loosely piece of paper, that one piece of paper, that's really a contract, but they only give you the signature page. And they say, "By the powers invested in me by the states and God, I pronounce you husband and wife." And you go off and sign the certificate, and what did you just do? You just signed the rights of your fallopian tubes, your eggs, the mother. Just signed the rights of the unborn child over to the State of Colorado Corporation, all caps, as an example. So the marriage certificate is another bond on the unborn child. That the child, soon as it's born, is born as an alien, because you just agreed that the status of the mother is gonna be the status of the child, and they just made you sign another contract under marriage, saying, "To affirm, when you have a child, immediately bring him to the hospital, sign that birth certificate, because that child belongs to us." You can't leave with that child with the marriage certificate, because that child's born on so-called United States soil. So therefore, they catch the child in advance while it's still an egg in the fallopian tubes, through the marriage certificate. It's automatically an orphan before it's born. So between a birth certificate and a marriage certificate, they're both bondage for your child. So you must understand, when you're looking at Revelations in the Bible, I believe it's chapter twelve, verse one through six. It talks about, there's a woman cries out, because she's giving birth to a child. And appears a red dragon that stands in front of her. And the dragon's standing there waiting to devour the child. The woman gives birth to a male, a son. And then the son is taken up into heaven and saved. What does all that mean? If the dragon is so bad, why didn't the dragon eat both the child and the mother? Why didn't it just eat the mother before she gave birth to the child? If he's so bad, the dragon, now, red dragon, is because the dragon knows that you are God, you're the true entity. You create life. He can't touch you. So what does he do? He attacks the child. That's the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. The colonists took your child and made your child an alien. Because he know he can't get you, so he gets the child every time. The offspring. They're always attacking the child, and the child grows up with indoctrination, because he grew up under the adoption agency of the colonists to learn a colonist's education about who he is. You know you're Black, right? "Yeah, I'm Black, Black and I'm proud." Yeah, that a boy. Indoctrination. Psychosis. Cognitive dissonance. You disconnected yourself from your nationality because of indoctrination, because the colonists took your child. That's the red dragon.
Systematic programming.
Uh-huh. But guess who consented to that? The mother. Why? Because your mother's mother thought she was Black too. Because she was the child at one time. Let's continue with the reading, because what's, let's get back to the point. What is the point of this discussion, this lesson plan? How did the Moors lose their land? They lost their land through a pen. Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, pages two fifty-four to two fifty-six, section seven. "Descendants of Africans shall be citizens of the United States under a denizen status of alien." That's Revelations, chapter twelve, verse one through six, if I'm not mistaken. The dragon has devoured your child. And then the child, what does that mean, devoured? Digested. Ever have Reader's Digest? So therefore, the child turns into adult one day, and that adult turn around, teaches the next child that indoctrination. That's how they devour us as a community, because we think we're crayons. The mothers taught the child this. And the teachers at school doubled down on it, your pastor at the church tripled down on it. So when the mothers wake up and realize their child is not a crayon, because you know that you have a nationality, then you start to reverse the indoctrination, because you now start telling them the truth. Let's continue with the reading.
That was it.
That was it, okay. So that's alien. Now, let's go look up the word "subject." They use that word a lot on their definition of denizen, correct? Subject. What page is subject? For the people at home.
Down at the bottom.
There it is. Subject, page five ninety-four. So...
Fifteen ninety.
Excuse me, fifteen ninety-four. So we can have the mothers read "Subject to," Black's Law Dictionary, fourth edition. No, fourth edition.
Um, "Subject to: liable, subordinate, subservient, inferior, obedient to, governed or affected by, provided that..." provided that, provided answerable for.
Who has to raise this case law?
American. See the word, American?
Yeah.
Those who call themselves American.
That's case law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are subjects. So let's go back over the reading. So anyone is referred to as a subject, which is the second lowest class. You got alien, subject. Remember in denizen, they stuck between an alien and a subject. So a subject is liable, subordinate, um, subservient, inferior, obedient to. Obedient to who? The government. Why? Because you're the stepchild. You gotta now stick to the rules of legislation, codes, and statutes, which is in law. Only way for you now to get back your rightful place of rights to enforce treaties, constitutions, conventions, and declarations, you must have a nationality. So a subject is someone that's inferior. And people who call themselves Negro, black, and colored, minority, African-American, don't realize they're consenting to, through acquiescence, to allow the colonists to take away their birthright because they agreed to it. Why? Because we threw a pen, a black person checks the box, black. Now the new cool name is African-American. None of these things are nationality. They're all a status to steal your birthright. Okay, now that we know what an alien is, now we know what a subject is, let's look up the definition of citizen. Even though, when you have time, you should read the entire definition of citizen when you have time. So what the mothers read, the definition of citizen.
Citizen. A member of a free city or dural uh, society. Civitas. Possessing all the rights and privileges which can be enjoyed by any person under its constitution and government.
Possessing all the rights.
Possessing all the rights and privileges which can be enjoyed by any person under its constitution and government. And subject to the corresponding duties. Citizens, quote unquote, citizens, are members of community inspired to common goal, who in associated relations submit themselves to rules of conduct for the promotion of general welfare and conservation of individuals as well as collective rights. Case law.
All right. So what did we burn? Does someone calling citizens have a right to rights and privileges? They're making a distinction. Rights and the privileges. So rights mean you can enforce treaties and constitution. Privileges means you're subordinate, you're subject and alien. You can't enforce real rights. You get civil rights, and which is not civil rights, is civil privileges. They just don't tell you that. But by your acquiescence, when you check the box black by an adhesion contract, you're saying that you're an alien and a subject by your own consent. So therefore, you're automatically classed underneath civil privileges. Whereas those who have a nationality can enforce rights under a treaty, constitution, conventions, and declarations. You must understand, these classifications mean something. So what's the highest classification? A national. Let's look up the definition of national, fourth edition. National.
Pertaining or relating to a nation as a whole, commonly applied in American law to institutions, laws, or affairs of the United States or its government as opposed to those of the several states. The term national, as used in the phrase national of the United States, is broader than the term citizen.
Uh huh. Now watch this. You see it's got the quote unquote around the word national? So let's read that paragraph again, mother. So when you see quote, you say quote unquote, national. Let's read again.
The term national, quote unquote, national, as used in the phrase national of the United States.
Quote unquote.
Quote unquote, is broader than the term citizen. Quote unquote.
So what are they saying there? They already know, in the United States, no one is a national. You gotta catch that. When they put in the quote unquote, they're trying to let you know something, something ain't real here. There's some de facto language going on here. But therefore, let's look at the real strict sense of what they just said. What did they say? Under national. They said the term national, quote unquote, as used in the phrase of national of the United States, quote unquote, is broader than the term citizen, quote unquote. So, national's the highest. Citizen's the second. Subject is the third. Alien is last. So in the Naturalization Act of 1870, page 254 to 256, section 7, it says the African descendants shall be aliens. They put you at the bottom through an act of Congress with a pen. So let's talk about the solution. Now that we pointed out one of the problems. That's one of the major problems, which you call a radical, radical act by de facto government. What is the solution? The solution is mothers. Mothers must be cognizant, because you're giving birth to the child. A new generation of children that come into the world have to understand, they're not agitatives. They're not Negro, blacks, and colored. They're not minorities. They're not African-Americans. Because Africa-America is two continents. That's not a country. That's not a nationality. So what's the solution? You must do what's called a reversion. You must do what's called an adverse claim. You must do what's called a restoration. You must do what you call reparation. Reparation means to repair to the original status. Don't have them do it a check. Watch this. But how do you do it? You gotta do it the same way they did it. With a pen. Okay, what are you doing with the pen? You must proclaim your nationality. That's number one. With a pen. Then you must put together a government. A government of elected body officials. And then you must have a constitution. Then you must have consul of court, a lodeo land claim to the land, the latitude, longitude of the land. Then you must have a national trust, a flag, and a seal. Watch this. What does the constitution mean for every country around the world? It means it's a birth record. It's the birth of a nation. It's a political document. Because the mother carries a de jure bloodline anyway. But now she must create what's called a political document. Because around the world, they accept your papers, your patented letters. What is the constitution? It is a birth record. Let's go deeper. The woman carries the 2X chromosomes together in the womb. Out of her egg are 2X chromosomes. So therefore, Mother Earth is a living being. And the woman, women walking around Earth, is their human being. When y'all come together, together, that's the 2X chromosome. So therefore, from a political perspective, you must have a birth record. What's the birth record mean? The constitution that says you creating a nation on paper. That's the political document that all states, countries, tribes, and clans must have. You must create a state. First, it starts with your state of mind. Then you create a political state on paper. Constitution through your elected officials. Not just self-appointed people. Elected officials have ballots, election, and inauguration. Have your flag, your seal, your lodeo land claim, which is another political document. And then your national trust, which is another political document. For other people, positive people. Only mothers can do that. And last but not least, birth record for each one of your nationals. I.e., they call birth certificate. All mothers now that proclaim their nationality underneath their state of that constitution now ratifies a birth record for each one of their nationals. What does that mean? The mothers proclaiming and claiming their own child back from that adopted parent. I.e., the state of Colorado, all caps, Corporation. Everything the Moors women do brings us all back to the proper status of saving humanity. Because humanity has fallen. Fallen where? Into the hands of the colonists through a pen. And only mothers can get it back. Now watch this. I'm gonna give you a reference point. The rights of indigenous people that was fully ratified by the United Nations has already given us specific instructions on what to do as indigenous people. So for the record, that's the first thing we're gonna do is read in the annex. What did the United Nations say about the colonists? So in the annex, let's go ahead and read that, mothers. Rights indigenous people annex, I think it's article 3. I think it's the third article. Rights indigenous people that were ratified in the year 2007, signed into law by President H. Barack H. Obama in 2010.
Is this the one that starts affirming?
Yes.
Affirming further that all doctrines, policies, and practices based on or advocating superiority of peoples or individuals on the basis of national origin or racial, religious, ethnic, or cultural differences are racist, scientifically false, legally invalid, morally condemnable, and socially unjust. Reaffirming that indigenous peoples in the exercise of their rights should be free from discrimination of any kind concerned with indigenous peoples, concerned that indigenous peoples have suffered from historic injustices as a result of inter-alia, their colonization and dispossession of their lands, territories, and resources, thus providing them from exercising, preventing them from exercising, in particular, their right to develop in accordance with their own needs and interests. Recognizing the urgent need to respect and promote the inherent rights of indigenous peoples which derive from their political, economic, and social structures and from their cultures, spiritual traditions, histories, and philosophies, especially their rights to their lands, territories, and resources. Recognizing also.
Okay, let's stop right there. Now watch this. That's in the annex. What's the annex mean? That's the preamble. They're setting you up for what the rest of the articles are gonna tell you about. So right there in the annex, the United Nations has already said the colonists are doing everything under what they call doctrines. What's a doctrine? Doctrine discovery, which is legalities such as the Naturalization Act of 1870. They say this legally invalid, scientifically false, morally corrupt, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They're already calling the colonists alleged criminals. Then they go on to start saying the indigenous people must create what? Self-determination. That's your nationality. Then they start talking about politics. Watch this. Let's now read Article 3 and Article 4 of the Rights of Indigenous People fully ratified by the United Nations.
Article 3. Indigenous peoples have the right to self-determination. By virtue of that right, they freely determine their political status and freely pursue their economic, social, and cultural development. Article 4.
Stop. So Article 3, let's examine what's happening. The United Nations said, they gave you specific instructions. Listen. Especially Moors at home. The United Nations have given us instructions, and Moors are trying to take shortcuts and not listen to the instructions on how to get your land back. They said, first things first, self-determination. What's that? Proclaim your nationality. What's the second thing it says? Politics. What is politics? Government. Under government, then you can enforce your economics, culture, et cetera. But what they're not telling you is, under politics, you must have a constitution. So now they're gonna double down to make sure you understood Article 3. Article 4 is gonna disclose exactly what they're trying to say in Article 3. Let's read Article 4, mother.
Indigenous peoples in exercising their right to self-determination have the right to autonomy or self-government in matters relating to their internal and local affairs as well as ways and means for financing their autonomous functions.
So stop right there. What do we have here? Now they're being clear. First, you proclaim, proclaim your nationality. I'm a Moor. More specifically, Moroccan. That's the nationality, Moroccan. A Moor. Second thing you must do is fully ratify a government. In order to have a government, you must have elections. You can't be self-appointed. Then you must have a constitution, because that constitution now outlines your bylaws as well as your latitude, longitude of your geographical landmass. For us at a lodeo Moors Pradium, Auntie Colorado, acronym AMPAC, we have a constitution proclaiming our latitude, longitude of the geographical area that is 104,185 square feet. 104,185 square feet of land, air, and water. That's an acronym for law. Law is land, air, and water. That's what we claim through our lodeo land claim. But how can we do that? First, we have to have a constitution and a government. The government is called the state. So we have a state provincial government here at a lodeo Moors Pradium, Auntie Colorado, So we have a state provincial government here at a lodial Moors Parade of Monticolorado, also known as AMPAC. What else do we have? We have a flag and a seal. What else do we have? We have Consular Court, and we also have birth records. Because the mothers proclaiming and at-first claiming her own nationals. Because nationals have the highest status. Only a mother can do that through a pen. They stole it from you with a pen. All you gotta do is take it back with a pen, that's simple. That's simple. Watch this. Let's give you another reference point. Let's look up now. The Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine. I don't think y'all have a copy, but I have it here in my hands. The Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine, which I make reference to quite often. It tells you right in the annex and the first two articles of the obligations of Moors on how you get your land back. Keep in mind that it was fully ratified in nineteen sixty-nine, forty-two years ago. If the Moors haven't been following instructions. Let's read the instructions. Vienna Convention nineteen sixty-nine, here we go. Believing that the codification and progress development of the law of the treaties achieved in the present convention will promote the purpose of the United Nations set forth in the Charter, namely maintenance of international peace and security, the development of friendly relations and the achievement of cooperation among nations. So this is to bring people together, right? Listen. Affirming that the rules of customary international law will continue to govern questions not regulated by the provisions of this present convention. So what it says? It says affirming that the rules, there's a rules of engagement. Moors haven't been following the rules. What are the rules? Let's read the rules. Introduction, Part One, Article One. Scope of the present convention, the present convention applies to treaties between states. So the first rule is, you must have a state. Now read it again. Scope of the present convention, the present convention applies to treaties between states. Moors been out here ruled. Moors don't have a state through their constitution, through their matriarchal council, which is the women who sign off on that constitution and birth records. The flag represents the woman, the seal represents the woman, everything comes through the woman. Because you gotta understand, the colonists through a pen stole everything from a woman. So only a woman can get it back. So therefore, the state is a political word for saying the political document, which is the constitution, which is the birth record, the birth of a nation. And only a mother can draft that, sign off on it to bring her sons and daughters back into a national status, which is the highest status. Let's continue with the instructions, watch this. Article Two, use of terms. Number one, for the purpose of the present convention. Listen, Article One, Section Eight. Treaty quote unquote means an international agreement concluded between states in the written form and governed by the international law, whether embodied in a single instrument or in two or more related instruments, wherever its particular designation. So what's the instrument? The constitution. From a mother, creating a state, a provincial state within the Moroccan Empire. Birth records, et cetera, those are the instruments. Number, Section One, Section B. Watch this, it's called ratification quote unquote. We'll make sure you get a copy of this. Watch this. Acceptance, approval and accession means each case, the international act so named whereby a state establishes on the international plains is consent to be bound by a treaty. Only a state can be bound by a treaty. Only a state can ratify a treaty or adopt the treaty or come under the protections of a treaty. A state, and a state has its nationals in it. Moors have not created a political state, a provincial state. Here the instructions, they're gonna keep using the word state. However, a lodial Moors Parade of Monticolorado is a provincial state, on the record, for the record. Now that we've done that, let's find out what type of powers we have. Section C. Full powers quote unquote means a document emanating from the competent authority of a state designating a person or persons to represent the state for negotiating, adopting or authenticating the text of a treaty for expressing the consent of the state. To be bound by a treaty or for accomplishing any other act with respect to a treaty. What they saying? In order to have full powers, you must now have a state, state constitution, flag, seal, Consular Court, birth records, a lodial land claim, national trust. Now you can enforce treaties. If you don't have a state, you cannot and have full powers. Moors are running around here ruled. They only have limited powers. Because they ain't been following the instructions of the United Nations Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine. Moors want full powers, but they're taking shortcuts, they're not following the instructions. The mothers have to bring our active Moors back into the fold of government with a state, a provincial state. Provincial means a small portion of an entire empire. So you must have a provincial state that the mothers have to bring back to life. Only mothers give life. Sons can't be out here creating life, sons don't create life. We protect life, that's our job. But your sons out here taking life with what? A pen and guns. Let's continue the reading after full powers. Reservations, how do you reserve your rights? You know how people put on there, all rights reserved? Let's figure out, how do you reserve your rights? Good question. Let's read the law, the material fact. Reservation, which is Section D, says means a unilateral statement, however phrased or named, made by a state. What does that mean? Under your own consciousness, you can create a state with your population through your ratified government through elections. When signing, ratifying, accepting, approving or ascending to a treaty whereby it purports to exclude or to modify the legal effect of certain provisions of the treaty to their application to that state. So what's happening here? In order to reserve all rights reserved? You have to reserve those treaties that are already set forth, that are well-set up principles and adopt them underneath your state provincial government that has a constitution, flag and a seal, et cetera, birth records by the mothers. Only the mothers can do this with a pen. Let's continue with the reading. Moors wanna negotiate. They wanna talk to the United States of America, they wanna talk to the several states. Let's negotiate. I need you to remove habeas corpus and you sit in evidence of jurisdiction court warrant. You're trying to negotiate with a colonist. Well, how can you negotiate? What gives you the authority? Let's read it, what's the United Nations say, the instructions? How do you negotiate? Okay. Negotiating state quote unquote is what they say right off the top. You gotta be a state in order to negotiate. Are you listening?
Yes.
This word state is important to understand, they give me the answers to the test. Moors been failing the test. Let's continue the reading, Section D, negotiating state means a state which took part in the drawing up and adoption of the text of the treaty. That means either you can create a treaty or you can adopt a treaty. But you must be a state. Moors can't enforce treaties if they don't have a state. A consulate can't enforce a treaty because the consulate must be affiliate to a government. And that government must be ratified through elections and have its Consular Court, birth records, seal, flag, constitution, et cetera, by the mothers. That's the only way to negotiate as a state. So you wanna contract? Because that's what all agreements are, contracts. So now you're trying to contract with the United States of America Corporation or the several states of, they're all corporations, so they're getting in contract with you. So you're talking contract when you're trying to get out of a speeding ticket? Because that was a contract. They're claiming your speed, that speeding ticket is a contract. So how do you get out of that contract, i.e. that suit, the speeding ticket? Watch this. Contracting state. Section F. So if you wanna talk contracts, you must have a state. Contracting state means a state which consisted to be bound by the treaty, whether or not the treaty has entered into enforcement. You wanna enforce treaties, you wanna negotiate, you wanna talk contracts, you must have a state. Moors haven't been establishing states, which makes us outlaws. We're working outside of the law contract. Anytime you're working outside of the law contract, outside of the law makes you an outlaw. That's why the United States of America ain't listening to us, although they're criminals. That's why the several states don't listen to Moors, although they're criminals. It's because we're violating the law ourselves. We haven't been following the instructions. My job is just to simply read the instructions. That's what judges do, they interpret the law. I'm reading the law to you right now, law of what? International law of mothers. Only mothers can create international law because you created life on Earth. So let me say this. Although I've just given you a reference point. How is it Moors can have the right to use their pen? What gives us, us, our delegation of authority to pick up a pen and write ourselves back into law? Go ahead, mother, if you think you have the answer.
Your consanguinity.
That's correct. Your consanguinity is the number one thing. First, you must proclaim your nationality, then you can set up government. Now watch this, what does the United Nations say about you proclaiming your nationality? Let's stick to the reference point. Let's talk law. Now you must go to the Treaty of Madrid of the year eighteen eighty, Article Fifteen. And for the purpose of the class, I'm gonna have the mothers read Article Fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, which is called the Protections of Moroccans. So I'm gonna hand this to the mothers. Matter of fact, Mother Nicole. Okay. Now keep in mind now, these are reference points. This is well-set up principles of law. So if the mother can read Article Fifteen, that would be great.
Any subject of Morocco has been naturalized in a foreign country who shall return to Morocco shall have, shall after having remained for a length of time equal to, to that what shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization. Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco, unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Foreign natural, naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restrictions.
Stop. Excellent. So mother, if you don't mind, I'll take that from you now so I can go ahead and use the interpretation so that the mothers, the Moors mothers can now get their sons to understand their obligations. So we're gonna read Article Fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, Article Fifteen. Reads as follows. Any subject of Morocco. So remember, what is a subject? Person that's now in inferior position. Someone stole their birthright and made them a servant. An alien. So any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized. Naturalization Act eighteen seventy, the citizens of Africans are now aliens and subjects. In a foreign country, what foreign country? The United States of America is a foreign, private corporation calling itself a country. And who shall return to Morocco. When you return to Morocco, it's all called your consciousness, because you're already standing on Morocco. Now you become cognizant. You no longer suffer from cognitive dissonance. Now you come into the de jour understanding that you're Moroccan. You come back into Morocco because you're standing on Morocco. Actually, you didn't come back to nothing, you just realized you were already standing on it. Isn't that what they told Dorothy in The Wizard of Oz? You're already home, you just bumped your head. You bumped your head, Dorothy. Now you're awakening to understand you're already in Morocco. Now watch this. Shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization. So the Moors were naturalized by the colonists since eighteen seventy. Now we're in the year, we're in the twenty-first century. So for a period of time, we've been naturalized. So that's what they're saying here, now you've been naturalized for a period of time, watch this. You can choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligations to quit Morocco, unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. What does that mean? See, the United States of America never got the consent from the Moroccan government to allow Moors to be citizens in the United States. So as soon as a Moor realizes he's a Moor, he no longer Negro, Black and Color African American and minority, he says, no, I'm a Moor. You immediately come under the protections of the Moroccan government. However, if you wanna remain Negro, Black and Color, i.e. a citizen of the United States, you gotta get permission, consent from the Moroccan government to remain as a subject of a foreign country. Let's continue to read. Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restrictions. So therefore, Moors, when you come out into consciousness, being Moroccans, you don't have no restrictions by the United States of America. The United Nations will protect your rights and your mother will protect your rights because through a pen, she created a state government, constitution, a flag, a seal, a lodial land claim, a national trust, birth records, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Because she's following the instructions of the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine. So I'm gonna end on that note. Moors must follow the law. Thank you. Once again, this is another short definition under Article sixty-four.